And started.
All right, we're recording, so I'm the. We call a meeting to order here, it's a city council. Meeting for the city of Holiday Island for the nineteenth of December. Twenty twenty-three at six P M. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and. For all. Roll call. Councilmember Dumas, here. Councilmember Elwood.
Here's.
Councilmember Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Coon.
Here.
Councilmember Mills.
Here.
Councilmember Fineman.
Has he signed on to?
See, I'm.
I don't think he.
Excused. Mayor Keys.
I'm here.
Okay, all present except for one councilman, Mr. Mayor.
I'll declare a forum. Did everybody get the latest update of the agenda with the? Items added, building permit refund policy and? The. That may be the last thing I added.
The resolution.
Well, yeah, their resolution.
Twenty eleven.
Oh, twenty eleven, yeah. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose. Minutes were distributed for the meeting of eleven twenty-one. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move that we have heard the minutes from the meeting of eleven twenty-one.
I'll second.
Second.
Any discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who is the second?
I are.
Um, pause. Minutes are approved. Any ceremonials, recognitions, proclamations, or memoriam? This would probably be an appropriate time to say Merry Christmas, everybody.
That's your problem, I think.
Yeah, I proclaim December twenty-fifth as Christmas this year.
Okay.
All right, moving on to reports, financial statements for November, unless.
Okay. We'll begin with the balance sheet. You can see at the end of November, we had. Total cash on hand of just under seven hundred ninety-five thousand. Two forty-three of that is in the general fund. Seventy-five in the reserve account. And about four seventy-seven in the street fund. And the payroll taxes. Shows liability because they were paid in December. You go to the next is the general plan. I'll just kind of hit the highlights on that. Through November, now there's only one month of the year left, so. Um, we're through about. Ninety-three percent of the year. And you can see in the revenue. We had twenty-four thousand seven eighty about in November. Making our total of two sixty-nine eight. And. If we receive about twenty-five thousand in December. We will be at about two ninety-five, so. Might be nineteen hundred dollars under budget, we'll see what December brings. Uh, other revenue. Uh, we had eight hundred dollars of interest. Uh, sixteen hundred dollars in applications. Bringing a total there of eighty-six hundred dollars. Um, and planning commission perm. That's also the building permits and conditional use of. Two thousand one fifty bringing us there to. Five thousand eight seventy-five, and we didn't have anything budgeted for that. In our budget, so. Uh, and our bank takes sixty dollars, making eleven twenty-five for the year. So again. Thirty thousand in December would bring us to. Three seventeen thousand dollars under budget. As you go through expenses. I don't think there's anything too unusual. I think all of the expenses are. In line or under budget, pretty much. Uh, we'll be under budget on. Administrative. Going on down. Legal fees. Uh, we'll probably be under budget on that. Uh, rent expense, there's no rent. In December for the office. So we are over budgeted there. Due to the. Uh, leasehold improvements to fix this up for our use, that was. You can see twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars there. Uh, so otherwise we'd have been on budget or under. Uh, other expenses. Were under budget there. Building and construction will be under budget on salaries. Legal. Very expensive. We'll probably be under budget, go to enforcement.
Um, is that seven fifty legal, was that for the?
Doesn't belong there, right?
Okay, that.
What belongs in, uh.
I put it in the wrong place.
I figured that's what it was.
Oh, correct, yeah. Um. Other expenses, regarding them also, or. That's where the seven fifty should have been. Um, so we'll be under budget on court. Planning commission. Uh, yeah. Legal fees are a little over budget, but other expenses. Uh, will probably be under budget. Public safety. Uh, we're well under budget there, there's, we haven't had the second deputy. Uh, solid waste. Dumpster fees are over budget. About two hundred dollars. But. And we didn't have any legal budget at there. But. Um. We don't have, uh. Too much, I guess we didn't have any budget. For supplies and dump playing up either. Uh, so that's the general fund, any expenses, any questions on that? Okay. No activity in the reserve account, that adds a seventy-five thousand in. That was set aside at the end of the year last year. Uh. Let's see here. We've talked about that one. Okay, the street fund. Wait a minute. We must have things in here, did I jump back?
It's hard to know.
I think there was a payment, uh, payment journal might have been in there a couple of times.
Need it something.
But I was going to, it was on, in, again.
Yeah.
Right, we might have had it.
General final return. Here's the payment journal, buying the. Expenses paid for the month. Now, tell me, back under public safety, it didn't show anything for the, sure for the month because. We always get the bill after the end of the month and. Of course, was paid early December and not in November, so there's gonna be two months expense and. And street fund. Um. We received twenty-seven thousand. And property taxes. During November. Bringing us to about seventy-eight thousand. There, and I looked and I think last year we had two thousand in December, so. We might be under budget on. Property taxes. And so, um. Otherwise, you can see. We've got forty-four thousand during. November, of which. What, seventeen thousand was. Um. And government and state revenue turnbacks. So if we have seventeen and two, it'd be nineteen thousand. In December. Would bring us to two eighty-four, so we'll be close to budget there. And we have. Um. Will have. The road maintenance. That's great to pay in December. Which I think is twenty-three, six forty-four, so. We're gonna be, of course, way under budget. Um. Okay. We didn't have any construction contract. And we got a forty-five thousand dollar refund. On the two. Street contract, so. We ended up there with four seventy-six, eight ninety. At the end of the month. Questions?
I never figured out how they gave us a refund on that contract.
Pardon?
I said, I never figured out how they gave us a refund on that contract.
I don't know.
Ain't gonna ask questions.
Well, Jonathan Clements, the. The engineer at the state that manages. Um, you know, I asked him my question, I said. You know, we, uh, we opted not to strike while dry because. The state said it was too narrow to strike in the weather. And, um. So I said, you know, how do we get our money back on? We should get some kind of credit for that, and he said. After the project is all done, all the bills are paid and everything else. And they look at what the state paid and what we paid, and if we have money. It did, but it takes a while for that to happen, but. Um, in fact, we got back a lot more than I thought we would. So. Right, if there's no questions on the financials, uh.
Make a motion, we approve the.
Okay? Excuse me.
We accept questions.
Um, Ken made a motion to accept the financials. Uh.
It's your own agreement.
Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both financials are accepted. Moving on to committees, planning commission.
I have on the screen a list of the condition, these permits have been approved. Five pending for January, so we're, with the five, I think would be a twenty-seven permits to be applied for. The whole been approved. In the process, uh, no one objected to the condition. And the planning commission did not add any additional conditions to any of the permit requests, so. We're at that point, and we have this, uh, five list coming up in, uh. Before November, excuse me, or January meeting, there's. Uh, four from Gallagher and one from Gibson. That's on our calendar for January nine. The postcards went out sometime last week.
Did anybody get one yet?
Nope.
I haven't either.
I haven't either.
So.
At least the postage was paid.
Correct.
Yeah, so we're expecting that. From the data set that we had from the county of all residential improved and commercial improved. A list of names for mailing was used to mail a postcard notifying all those property owners. About the need for conditional use permits if you're doing short-term rental with your property. It's all after that.
So. If we don't start to see them in our mailboxes, because everybody should be getting one. We don't start to see them in our mailboxes pretty soon, we'll try to figure out. What happened? With the mailing.
I think we took the check down on Friday. Okay. And they were mailing them out. As soon as they had that.
Probably from what's happened in the fans. They're probably very busy during December, and the postcards probably. Have been pushed back.
Well, and I know that at the local post office here. They do not like to see those mass bulk mailings come through. Because, you know, they have to sort them into their routes, so here. You know, it's up to the carrier to get them. You know, separated out and. They don't have any. Extra time, so. They, uh, sometimes it does take a while to get them just through the post office here.
I thought.
They, they come to, they come here. For. Um, in, in, in a big box. And then the carriers have to go through the big box, they, they sort them to Holiday Island. They don't sort them to Route seven and Route two and Route five and Route three and. Yeah. They may be bundled that way, but the carriers themselves have to go through there and pack their own mail to be delivered. Okay. Um, next up then would, is that it?
It's all after playing.
Okay. Uh, next on the list would be broadband, I. I get emails on that all the time from. The state guy that's heading this up right now, but they're. They're not working on anything right now that I can see. That, that has anything to do with. Rural Arkansas, they're. They, they've awarded a couple of big programs already and. They're following those programs, but, uh.
Everybody know what that cable is, they're laying down by the prestige. This fiber, it looks like fiber, they're laying on the road, it's on the prestige.
I don't know. Have to stop and ask them.
Yeah, back, back.
I thought she knew what was going on.
Anyway, I, I, you know, Sandy Martin is basically the coordinator from Carroll County and. So I'm, I'm not gonna even worry about it until. She throws up a flag that says something is happening for Carroll County. Um, the fire department report was distributed and posted. I didn't really look over it this time, but it's usually about the same, mostly medical. You know, they did respond to a couple of fires. So everybody can review that at your leisure. If you have any particular questions, you could probably just call Chief Aitzen, Billy. Tell you anything you want to know.
They won't tell you nothing. Huh? Everybody is doing about those.
We're rescuing, rescuing animals on sailboat.
Really?
Apparently.
Oh, I don't know, Randy's been the most communicative.
Well, they can't tell you anything about the.
Oh, yeah, they can't tell you. Who had a heart attack that they responded to or anything.
That's as much as you don't.
All right, deputy report, uh, again, I didn't really spend much time looking at it, it's. I think it was pretty, uh, normal stuff. I will be scheduling a meeting in January with the county judge and the sheriff. To find out what their plan is to provide the second deputy per contract. We're living up to our part of the contract, but. It's, uh, crickets on their part. I know they're having trouble hiring and retaining deputies, but. You know. They still need to be, they have a contract. With us and they need to be communicating what their. Plan is, if they can't fulfill the contract, they need to tell us. Then we'll work on something else. And get our car back.
You get the car?
If you want to be the deputy.
Can I get a gun?
No.
No.
Yeah, but only one bullet. You keep it in your pocket. All right.
I would, uh, we relayed something to you, I was at the post office today, and. Lady came in and said she wanted to report that somebody was stealing her mail. And the lady at the desk got ahold of somebody else there, and she said, we're already working on that. And the deputy knows it, and, and they've rested.
Good.
Yeah, I was, I don't know who it was, but they sent on Facebook.
Somebody must have went down Holiday Island Drive last night because this morning. Our, our mailbox and our neighbors, which are side by side in the same thing, were both standing open. And we'd never let our.
I saw the other side of the street that were open when they came down.
So the only person could have been, you know, doing that would have been the deputy. So they are. Take the junk.
Well, this time of the year, they're gonna be looking for Christmas cards with checks in them.
My, yeah.
Not in my mailbox. Our checks are out, boy, not incoming.
Yeah, they could be looking for, they do, Terry won't mail anything at the post, nothing. She comes up here and mailed it at the post office, because you put the flag up on your mailbox, you might as well be saying. Yeah. There's something important right here.
It could be the checks in my mailbox.
All right, um, then we had a report on, uh, um. Aaron White provided a report on. Current status of, uh, open code enforcement. Um, there's a lot of open. Cases pending.
Can I make a suggestion to add something on there to indicate whether he is. Put out a notice or. Or a citation, I mean, I don't know what he. There's nothing on there that shows what the staff is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I could have that column. A lot of these are trying to, trying to find who the owner is and stuff like that.
I know they're.
Trying to make contact.
Really tell you where around. Once exposed.
But, and there's, you know, this. This is a long enough list as far as the number of hours that it's gonna take to resolve all these, but. Uh, there's, there are resolved ones that happened. Before, um, August fifteenth that aren't on this report, so.
That's just like.
He's, he's. He's making progress.
If he put out.
I would guess that. The one column says last status change date. That probably just means that's the last date that he's worked on it, not every date that he's worked on.
Yeah.
Oh, alright. I would think, yeah.
Yeah, we, I did look at it, and I saw a suggestion I had.
Okay, next on the list then is, uh. We don't have any special committees, we don't have any old business. So moving on to new business. Resolution. Twenty twenty-three dash zero zero nine. Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero nine?
I make a motion, we approve the resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero nine.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to. Approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero nine, a resolution adopting. Policy for publishing, posting, and notification requirements. For the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, I'm not gonna read the whole thing. Um, unless somebody wants me to. But I will point out what the differences are. And it's basically, we changed from. Um, posting. Uh, one of the posting locations being the, the, the sign in the parking lot by the clubhouse. To inside the hall here at, uh, at City Hall. So. That's the five parking locations, and there's one place in here where we had, if you look on page two. Uh, section two B. Um, we had said that we would post for no fewer than forty-five days. But the law only requires thirty days. And sometimes with the. Size of our ordinances and everything, if we leave them up for forty-five days. That, um, yeah, we run out of space for posting. So, um. That's the changes to the, uh. Old policy. Any discussion? And the roll call vote?
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
And Councilmember Fineman now on.
Nope.
Okay. Five in favor, Mr. Mayor, no opposed?
That's enough to pass it, so resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero nine is adopted. Next on the agenda is revolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one zero. Resolution adopting the operating budget for twenty twenty-four for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, who have a motion to. Approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one zero.
I'll go with it, go ahead.
Approve, resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one zero.
Second.
Ken made a motion to approve, Lynn seconded it. Um. This was short enough, but I guess we can read it, you want to read it or?
Sure. Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash zero ten. Resolution adopting the operating budget for two thousand twenty-four for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Whereas the city of. Council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Has made a comprehensive review of the proposed budget and. Whereas in the opinion of the city council. The proposed budget reflects as accurately as possible. The anticipated revenue and expenditures of the city of Holiday Island. For the two thousand twenty-four calendar year. Now be it resolved by the city council. Of the city of Holiday Island, that section one. The resolution shall be known as budget resolution for the twelve-month. Period beginning on one one twenty-four. And ending on twelve thirty-one twenty-four. And that the attached budget documents reflect. The estimated revenues. And expenditures for the period. All revenues and appropriations are estimates and are subject to change during the budgetary year. Section two. The amounts of the revenues and expenditures for the year two thousand twenty-four. Are hereby authorized and appropriated. For the purposes set forth for the calendar year ending twelve thirty-one twenty-four. Estimated revenue in the general fund is three hundred and thirty-one thousand five fifty. And appropriations, three ninety-four, four hundred and thirty-five. The street fund. Estimated revenue is three hundred and one thousand two ninety-two. And then expenditures, three hundred thousand. Making total estimated revenue. Of six hundred and thirty-two thousand eight forty-two. And the total appropriations, six hundred and ninety-four thousand four thirty-five. Section three, the extraordinary expenses of providing. A corded code enforcement vehicle, radio upgrade for the fire department. And C S A software upgrade to be covered using surplus carryover. And CSA software upgrade to be covered using surplus carryover cash in the general fund. The fund balances, uh, beginning. Uh, general fund would be two forty-six eight thirty-four. Net change for the year, uh, negative sixty-two thousand eight eight five. Living and ending balance of one eighty-three, nine forty-nine. The street fund, beginning balance four seventy-one, eight fourteen. Net change and increase of twelve hundred and ninety-two dollars. Living and ending balance of four seventy-three, one oh six. General fund reserve, beginning seventy-five thousand, ending seventy-five thousand. Total, uh, beginning balances seventy-three, six forty, seven ninety-three, six forty-eight. The net change, a negative sixty-one, five ninety-three. Living ending balances totaling seven hundred and thirty-two thousand fifty-five dollars. Passed and approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas. On this date of December nineteen, two thousand twenty-three.
Then there's two attachments that have a little more detail on the. On the general fund and the reserve and the street fund. That's the same format we used last year. Let me make a couple of comments about the budget before we move to a vote. Um, number one, I want to acknowledge the fact that, um, I got a request from. A whole bunch of people. I didn't count how many signatures, but, uh, a request, um, that we. Uh, increase our budget from, um, I think we have two thousand dollars in the budget. For advertising to ten thousand dollars. Uh, in an order to more effectively, uh, promote Holiday Island. And I wanna, uh, I did not change the budget, but I want to. Tell you, tell everyone. That we will work on, uh, increasing, you know, we can amend the budget at any time during the year if we think we can afford it. So what I would like to do is, uh, and, and by the way, I do not disagree with what you're saying. But it's, you know, um, by law, cities can't deficit spend, so, um. So I had to make the budget come out. And, uh, and if you look at what we're buying out of, uh, carryover funds from this year, which is legitimate. It's almost exactly matches the three things that I listed as extraordinary expenses. The intent there being that we don't intend to do this every year. We're not gonna dip into the savings account every year. To cover our budget. So I wanted to have a budget, um, basically a balanced budget. When you're looking at reoccurring expenses. And that's basically what we have here. Um, but what I would like to do come January is, you know, I would appoint. Um, someone to represent the city. On an ad hoc committee of business people and interested citizens. To come up with a comprehensive advertising program. Uh, I would, I would say for the community. And, you know, where the money would be spent, what we would expect to get from that money. And, um, and where the fund would come from and consequently. Or subsequently what the, uh, city's portion would be requested to be. And, uh, you know, we can present that then to the city council and the city council can consider whether or not the funds are there to cover it. Um, I don't wanna just put money in the budget and, you know, and then start. Well, let's spend a little bit here and a little bit there and a little bit on this good idea and a little bit on this good idea. And at the end of the year, you've spent all your money, but you don't really know what you got for it. So I know that there are some programs out there that are being worked on right now. Where, um, at, at the very least, you get a report as to how many leads. You got from the money you spent and stuff like that. So anyway, that's, that's my plan going into January. I, I think it's. Vital to the city that we do that. Um, I just, uh, had to make the balance, the budget balance, um, at this point. I guess that's.
It looked to me like when we were looking at the financials for November. Um, that we are gonna come out ahead of what was forecast as the, uh, year end. Times in this budget, you know, to compare it to the budget. It looks like we're probably gonna be ahead forty to sixty thousand dollars to them. So that would. Leave a little bit more in the carryover.
Yeah.
Amount to, to dip into.
Yeah. We'll get a clear picture of that in January because we're gonna have to mix. We're gonna have to do a resolution adjusting the budget for this year again. Because we were over budget on some spending categories. And, um, so technically we have to adjust the budget, even if it's after the fact. For the council to acknowledge that we did that with our eyes wide open. Uh, keeps us out of trouble with the auditors. And we live to keep west.
I think you have a good idea on how to make some things there.
So are there any, uh, is there any discussion on the budget? Any public comment? Alright, then, uh, we'll move forward with the roll call vote.
Okay, councilmember Dunus.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Five in favor, no opposition.
Okay, then, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one zero is approved. And, uh, we have to report this or something after some legal requirement. We have to put this in the paper.
Yeah, put it in the newspaper.
Yeah.
Don't think we have to put it in the paper.
I thought there was.
What are you posting?
Publishing. Well, we'll put it on the website anyway. Next on the agenda is resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero eleven. Resolution, well, I'm gonna read it off the resolution. A resolution establishing a temporary building permit fee refund policy for the city of Holiday Island. Do I have a motion to approve twenty twenty-three dash zero eleven?
I move your own resolution one twenty-three dash zero.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, Barb made the motion. Linda seconded it. I'll go ahead and read it. Resolution number twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three dash zero eleven. A resolution establishing a temporary building permit fee refund policy for the city of Holiday Island. Whereas the city of Holiday Island issued building permits for fees to cover the cost. Of plan reviews and project inspection. And whereas from time to time permits are issued for projects that cannot go forward. And whereas it is reasonable for the city to refund a portion of the fees. If the associated costs have not yet been incurred by the city. Now it be resolved by the city council of Holiday Island. That the following policy for the refund of building permit fees be temporarily adopted. Until such time as the policy can be added to the building code. Number one, no refund will be made after construction has begun. Number two, inspection fees will be refunded if the permit has been issued, but construction has not yet begun. Number three, refunds must be requested within ninety days of the issuance of the permit. Passed and approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas on this date of twelve nineteen twenty-three. The reason, you know, we've, 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 we've had this request, a request made. Because, um, um, an individual took out a building permit. Uh, had all the architectural drawings and everything done. Uh, everything looked fine, but then they went out for folks to have it actually built. After the building permit was issued. Um, which on their part may have been a little bit getting the cart before the horse. But at any rate, uh, ended up that it was going to be, um. More costly than what they, um. You could afford or were willing to spend on the, on the house. So the project, uh, got canceled. And, um, but the reason why I wrote the policy the way I did was because by the time the building permit is issued. Uh, David has already done all the plan reviews and everything else. He's already invested all his time. In reviewing all the plans, going over the plans with the architect and or the contractor. Uh, which is usually quite time consuming and, and takes quite a bit of time. So, um, those funds would not be, once the permit is issued, those, that part of the. Fund wouldn't, or the permit, uh, would not be refunded. However, a substantial portion of the cost of a building permit, maybe. In some cases, maybe more than half of it is all the inspection fees. That for the inspections that are done during the construction phase. Well, if the construction phase hasn't started, we haven't incurred any of those expenses. So it seemed reasonable to refund the inspection fees if the project dies. So that's the purpose of this whole resolution. Any discussion?
I think we're missing some wording on number two. Cause it doesn't show the condition under which inspection fees will be refunded. And you just described it, but it's not in the writing. It says it's be refunded if the permit's been issued, but construction has not begun. Well, there is a period of time before construction begins. So what is the other condition? It is.
Well, the other condition is.
They have decided not to do it.
Yeah, well, I mean, that would be the, that's kind of implied in the whole.
Sounds like, well, I can just go ask for a refund. And, and until, you know, closer to the time I get ready to do the construction.
You say.
No, if you ask for a refund, the permit gets canceled. And then you'd have to start from scratch and get a new permit.
I think it's implicit.
At one time I thought we had talked about a partial refund. Related to the cons, uh, inspections. That were not gonna be done, but this just says. That the fees will, oh, oh, nevermind, inspection fees will be refunded.
I know, refund to me, so. I understand what it meant.
Okay.
But that's saying a lot. It is.
Eventually we'll put this in, in the actual building code where we talk about fees. But, uh, since the person asked for the, um, asked for the refund. Um, at least a month ago already. Um, for the project got canceled at, at least a month ago. Um, I wanted to go ahead and get this done. So any other discussion? This is.
Just a question for clarity, since some of the council members themselves had questions about this, maybe we could add something with saying. The part that was used for the review of the plans is not refundable. Or something like that. Just an idea.
It reads clear to me just because inspection fee. Well, two separate fees, there's two, but two separate fees, inspection fees that were refunding.
I never filed for a permit, so I did not know that was broken down in different sections.
Yeah, the, the first part of it is based on square footage. It's so much a square foot. And then the second part is the electrical inspection is as much the. The foundation inspection, the plumbing inspection and everything else all has a separate fee. And like I said, depending on the size of the house, the inspection fees can be more than the actual permit fee.
Doesn't matter how many times you go under. Sometimes, uh, electrical inspection, you may have to go there after those.
Yeah, if, uh, if they have to go back, if, if the inspection fails and they have to go back. Depending on, I guess, how egregious it is. Um, we can charge a hundred dollars for a reinspection according to the building permit. But this doesn't change anything. Once construction starts. You know, there's no refunding or no change of policy.
So in bullet number three, just to be clear. I start my project, I pay all my fees, I give you some advanced money for inspection, but I'm a hundred and twenty days out since I got my permit. I can't get a refund done if I canceled in a hundred and twenty days? Just wanna be clear, that's what you intended?
Say it again?
I'm four months out from the issuance of my permit. I decided to cancel the project. This says I won't get a refund.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, we can't wait. We can't, you know, what I didn't want is somebody, you know, a building permit's good for a year. So I didn't want somebody to have to sit on a building permit for three hundred and sixty days and then say, now I changed my mind, I want my money back.
Right.
So if something comes up right in the beginning of the program that. That makes it not practical anymore, then. Alright, uh, any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Councilmember Dunus.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
I will need direction and as to how much to refund on that.
Yeah.
One request.
Yeah, to work with David. Um, you'll have to get the building permit out and find out what the inspection fees were.
Okay.
And then you or he will have to get ahold of the contractor. Alright, next on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two zero, an ordinance. An ordinance establish a business, establishing a business license fee and penalty requirement. For the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas.
Aye.
And this will be the first reading.
Yeah, did we do, is it too late to change the order?
On the agenda?
Yeah. I'd like to see us do the interlocal agreements and then do the twenty. That one's gonna, that one, every time we bend into that thing, it goes. So you wanna do the easy one first?
Yeah, there you go, make sure. First of all, since we've had many workshops and everything else, I don't have to entertain comments.
Okay.
From anybody.
Okay.
And, uh, we can read it by title only. This is the first reading. So there'll be two opportunities to make changes.
That you're a long time.
I'm just, yeah.
This isn't a.
I've, I've worn the front of my shoe out kicking the can down the road on this one.
I think we have to read it on the first reading.
You have to read the whole thing?
I don't think so. Well.
Nobody's made a motion.
Not the exhibits.
Nobody's made.
Not the exhibits, but just the ordinance?
Yeah.
Otherwise we'd let you start reading and we'd all come back in about an hour.
I move that we approve ordinance twenty-three dash twenty.
I'll second.
Alright, Lynn made the motion to approve. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two zero and Lynn has seconded it. And this is the first reading. I'll go ahead and read the ordinance. An ordinance establishing a business license fees and penalty requirement. For the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Whereas Arkansas Code annotated twenty-six seventy-seven one oh two authorizes any city to require any person, firm, individual. Or corporation that shall, that shall engage in, there's an extra in in there. Uh, carry on or follow any trade, business, professional, location or calling within the corporate limits of the city. To pay a license fee or tax and. Whereas business licensing ensures that businesses operate legally and safely. Provide for the protection of the public health, safety and welfare and provides accountability. For business operations in the city. And whereas a business license registry allows for better communication between the city. And businesses should city need to communicate on a spending issue. And on a pending issue. And whereas a business license registry assists. The city in evaluating the economic health of the city and in determining the needs of and opportunities for the city. And whereas business licensing in Holiday Island will increase the public trust and confidence in the city. And whereas business licensing in Holiday Island will increase the public trust and confidence in the city's businesses. And whereas the city council has determined that business licenses are necessary. For the reasons set forth above and in order to anticipate the needs of emergency personnel. To protect the city sewer and water system from contamination. And to provide for more efficient fire protection. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. That section one, the following business licensing regulations attached here to. As exhibit A shall be adopted. Section two, any ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance. Are hereby repealed to the extent of a conflict. Section three, in the event that any section, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase or other provision or portion of this ordinance. Shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. The same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance as a whole or any part or provision. Other than the parts so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional. And the remaining provisions of this ordinance, they'll be construed as if such invalid, unenforceable. Or unconstitutional provisions, provision or provisions have never been contained herein. Past and approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas on this date of. Well.
We haven't passed it till the third meeting.
Uh, true, true. This is the first reading, so we haven't approved it yet. Okay. Unless there's any objection, I would like to forego the comment part and go straight to a roll call vote.
I object, Dawson.
All right.
Who wants to go first?
What do you, you go first.
My objection's the same as it always been. I know what the state statute says, not like the idea of telling somebody what they can do in their own home. That has no effect on the community whatsoever. And that would include. That would include me working like I used to work at home for a company that's in Tulsa, Oklahoma. And the other thing, Linda was nice enough to add the fees, and I'm a little confused about the first one because it says. Home-based business and non-traffic generating, unless twenty-five dollars, but I don't, I have a problem with the twenty-five dollars. Uh. But are we calling somebody that works from home a home business?
No.
You said you're working for somebody in Houston, that means you're an employee, it's not a business.
But if you read the first paragraph. To me, maybe I'm reading it wrong. To me, the very first paragraph and also the state statute. Authorized to require any person, firm, individual, corporation engaged in, carry on or follow any trade, business, profession, vocation or calling. Within the corporate limits to pay a license fee. And if you go down here, can't remember which paragraph. Anybody required to have a license in any state or whatever. I was required to have eight of them. In Florida, in North Carolina, South Carolina, but I was an employee. Is that what we intend this to apply to? Well, then where does it say it does apply to them? I guess that's my.
Cause it doesn't say employee on the first paragraph.
So. That's my occupation. I, if, if, if I'm working from home and the company's paying me and I have a license in Florida. Is that not my occupation? And or vocation and or whatever else. Or calling, or I don't want calling, yes. See, we didn't, we exempted that way back when, when we had the very first thing and then we changed all that. But I'm still concerned because not only I don't like to do that. I suspect there's gonna be a lot of non-compliance, cause if I was working at home for my company in Tulsa. It wouldn't even occur to me to look into the ordinances to see if I had to have a license. So I, to me, it's still not clear.
Maybe it's the city part of that.
Yeah, well, the state statute implies that to me. If you read the state statute, because I did, it reads verbatim the way this did. To me, a vocation or an occupation or profession includes me working for somebody else. And then we also include later on. That if you're required to have a license, which I was, I know at least three people in Holiday Island now. When I worked for a company in California.
Oh, there's lots of people that work for the company.
Yeah, I know. I mean, it's not even, it's growing pretty. It's not even gonna be a minority at some point in time.
Stick in a paragraph or section, you know, just a, a word that says doesn't apply on board with the other companies.
Yeah, I thought somewhere there was a provision that said.
But I could see.
Does not apply to employees.
But I, I think. We all have the same intent. But I think it's at least, at least ambiguous and ambiguous. Goes to the person that's trying to tell each one, but still, I don't wanna go there. Uh, I, is there not a simple? You know?
I think we probably lifted this from some other city, but.
Well, we did, cause I looked up two other cities, it reads the same way. And the state ordinance reads the same way. I just don't.
But I, I, I'm sure what you're saying is not to be too.
No. I, I don't, I don't know how to fix it. If, if I was, if we were to come up with, or Linda was, or I was, come up with some language to insert in here, would that mean we'd have to read it three more times?
No, the process is we go through it for the first reading the way it is. We can amend it as we go, but we can amend it on the third reading. It doesn't have to be reread three times every time it's changed.
I don't wanna take up everybody's time now. If, if we want. I, I mean, I can take a go, or Linda can take a go, or several was to take a go of a, a short sentence or something to put in there someplace. To make it clear, we'll send it to Dan later. That's okay. Just a suggestion.
All right, here's something that may work.
Oh, I'm listening, I'm listening.
In the first where.
I love whereas.
It has to be into the.
At the, at the end or within the ordinance, or maybe just after calling, say, in parentheses. Not to include. Persons included. Outside of the city of.
Well, but that still may be a little bit ambiguous. It, it solved one of the problems, but what about the problem of somebody who's a consultant? Not necessarily an employee. But consult.
Consultant. Running their own business is a consulting business, they need to like.
Why?
Well, they just do.
Why, why?
You're, you're earning your income independently.
In my spare bedroom, I'm, I'm consulting and earning an income and anything you have the right to tell me I have to have a business license. What has no effect on the, on the community whatsoever?
The state says that we have.
I know the state says we have to, having the right to legally and ethically aren't necessarily the same thing.
Yeah.
Well, okay, I've, I've got my two cents.
Turned around and twisted and wondering, trying to.
I, I.
Explain who you're excluding from this.
Well, I would exclude both somebody who's employed by somebody else and somebody who has no dealings within Holiday Island whatsoever. Other than a physically located here. But that's me.
I was initially opposed to that also when we had the last discussion in a previous meeting, but I have since changed my mind. So I'm, I'm, you're for.
I don't think, I don't think there's anybody in Holiday Island who's working for another company, working at home. As an employee of another company would feel that they, reading this would feel that they had to apply for a business license. And I don't think that we would try to impose it on them.
I would hopefully, no, I, I agree, other than if you read it, to me, it reads like they would have to.
I don't, I don't, I don't understand that because if I'm, if I'm an employee of another company, I am not a business.
Well, but it doesn't say.
You're plumber, but you work for Joe Blow Plumbing.
No, that's, I was thinking. I was thinking more white collar stuff, working completely on the computer, because it says paragraph one. Engaged in, carry on, pilot, trade, business, profession, vocation or calling.
Yeah.
A profession, I'm a professional, even though I'm an employee.
But, but a profession doesn't make you a business.
This doesn't say it has to be a business.
Well, it's a business license or.
I understand that, but we're, I understand that. But then when you go into the body of it, to me, it doesn't say it has, it has to be a business. It says to me, any occupation or trade. But.
Yeah, I think, I think you picked up on the fact that profession, vocation.
Yeah, that's the.
Or trade, those are.
Of calling.
People, that people, you know, that have a vocation or profession and, but they're working for somebody else. Yeah, I, I.
I, I, I agree. I don't think we would ever try to apply it. I don't think most people, well, most people would read that, cause if I was working from home for. Walmart, I wouldn't even consider that I needed to look at it. But I just, I'm not real comfortable with the way it words. I don't know, um.
If you're operating a business in the state of Arkansas, I mean, if you have your, if your residence is your location of your business. Be it a small, one-person operation. Do you have to have a state license?
It depends.
Do you register your business with the, um?
You have to have an EIN number. But I don't know that you have to have a license, depends on what you're doing, I guess.
It is.
If you're a doctor, anything wanted.
You're a CPA, you're a. Have to have a license.
But I can, I.
A little uh, uh, business, uh, selling stuff on Etsy or eBay or something like that.
Do you report that income as, as personal income or business income on your taxes?
For income somehow.
Yeah.
You don't have an EIN.
Not necessarily.
I don't have any EIN.
All right.
Cause I don't have any employees.
Okay. So. I don't know.
I don't know. If somebody thinks that that needs clarification. Give me some, yeah, give me something because our attorney, our attorney didn't think it needed more clarification and.
Attorney, they're throwing all their weight with it.
And as far as, as far as enforceability.
Well, enforced, yeah, that's another whole issue. I mean, even going.
I'm not gonna allow this to turn into another workshop. I'm just not gonna allow it, so.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Today, that's what you think, but when you leave and somebody else comes in and this is stating, and they might wanna go after the ones that are working. So maybe that might be a thing, something that.
We can't write ordinances depending on what's gonna happen after we're off the council.
Yeah.
Let's see, and Linda's attachment. I like to read it better because it says business instead of the whole language up here. And that's a twenty-five dollar fee, but to me, it's just a little.
Yeah, it's interesting that that first whereas is the one that basically the attorney.
I know.
Put in there.
Look, it's like comes straight out of.
First paragraph.
Same. And it's in the ordinance of the state, but it just, you know.
About it, it's in the ordinance with the state, because they're not doing that. They're not going with this.
No, they're, they're not going after, they're not doing it. They're saying, their statute says we can do that. Not that they're gonna do that.
I, I objected, I, I, I registered my objection, cause I thought we needed to go through. At least the section I added that hadn't been discussed.
I kinda like that.
So, but, cause I, I put those fees in there just arbitrarily, arbitrarily with my own thoughts. And Bryce helped me a little bit.
Uh-oh, then there's gotta be a problem.
Come up with those ideas, but uh, and, and he had some different ideas about the money values too, so. I don't know.
I knew we were gonna get into this.
Thing in that new section.
I, I, I went through her new section and I kinda thought it was okay. But that, that's, that's, I like your shot.
I did have a comment or question. Um, last Sunday's paper, Bentonville modified their business registry code. And they have a section on there about zoning compliance, because we had a, a business question come up this past week. That a business in town needed to do a license. And the licensing agency required that the planning commission inform them that their business was okay in the zone that they were doing. So they have language that says a planning commission review. So are we covered by just simply saying that we can't be violating the city ordinance? Will that be, be okay? Be sufficient? All right, cool.
That's the concern that I have, because. This ordinance says that I'm supposed to properly issue a license when someone applies. Does that leave it up to me then to decide that? It complies with the zoning requirements. I'm not comfortable doing that.
Which suggests you ask. Well, you ask the zoning official.
I'm comfortable.
That's fine. Promptly is, is a variable that gives you time to do your job.
Promptly is as fast as you can do it.
Yeah, don't delay, don't fuss. Right. So ask the planning official, are they operating okay?
Yeah.
That's the part, chief, if he's, if they've had an inspection. You can have a checklist. So we need to help us come up with a checklist.
If they're, if they're not open to the public, they don't have to have an inspection.
The only concern I have about compliance with their.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It did.
Every, every city is constantly changing their ordinances on. On business licenses and conditional use permits and that, it's totally fluid. And some, some cities are, oh, we're just gonna take this whole section out, like home-based businesses. County town said, forget it. We're just taking the whole section out. Johnson just added a whole section about home-based businesses.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it, it's, it's not an easy, you know, it, there's so many vari- variables. That it's impossible to write an ordinance that anticipates every situation. So we'll move forward and if we run into problems, we'll deal with them.
Well, I would comment on Pat's. Uh, objection. But basically what you're saying, if it's just a small business.
No, I'm not saying it's a business.
You don't need a license. You know, when does it become?
No, when it, when it becomes a business that I think we should be concerned is, is when it. Affects the residents of Holiday Island or the resources of Holiday Island. Or, I mean, or some way, the kind of business I did or the kind of work I did. I doubt that any of my neighbors would even have known that. I mean, so it has no effect on traffic, has no effect on resources to the city, and it has no effect on my neighbors. That's the kind, you know, where that changes is when it does have an effect on the community. Does have effect on the resources.
Then that decision has to be made. Who makes that decision? How do you make it?
By the way, like the ordinance.
You can't cover, really conceiving.
No, but we, I mean. You're, you're not wrong, I just, I just, I'm just not comfortable with it, knowing that that's the way of the world, especially now. Everybody that I used to work with, at the company, well, the company I used to work with doesn't have anybody going to the office anymore. Or rarely going to the office. It's a trend that I think is gonna continue.
But it's an occupation.
We're, we're not gonna worry about those.
I know. Where's, say, we're not gonna worry about those things. I know, I know we're not gonna worry about that. But there's nothing in there that says we're not gonna worry about that. We're not gonna be on this. Table forever.
Give me a hint, or give you a hint. Bentonville says that there are certain exceptions for that kind of stuff in Taipei of the zoning code, so. Maybe you can search Bentonville zoning book and find out what that means. That might help. The bottom, in the.
Yeah, let's, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna, right, but they'll give us some place to research it.
Hold on.
We're.
Okay.
Wow, could be kind of bigger.
Well, I'm sorry. Well, I'm sorry, came out.
What changed for the ordinance thing? The, the title of the ordinance. An ordinance establishing, take out the A before business license B. Establishing business license fees, okay? So that was another.
Well, but the ordinance isn't just establishing business license fees and penalties. It's, it's, there's needs to be a word added probably. A business license requirement and fee and penalty requirement.
I have a question. When you talk about, um, home businesses not using up the resources, what about the internet broadband issue? The more people are working at home on the computers, the more trouble we're having. Cause we don't have the broadband that we need. So we only think sometimes cars, trucks, delivery, roads, but we also have internet.
But it's not a resource of the city, uh, or is it a resource of cops cable?
But it is something we worry about.
I would absolutely, if we were. I don't.
But we're not gonna stop people from doing it just to.
Well, my grandson's game probably takes more. Wasn't anything I did when I worked from home.
Home, yeah. It is slowing down that natural, that resource.
Sort of streaming and gaming and all kinds of other things.
Mister Mayor, I, uh, plead to you a color roll.
Okay, I will do that. You're still vote on it.
Councilmember Elwood.
No.
Councilmember Graves. Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
I recorded four in favor and one opposed.
So that is enough to pass it on the first reading and we'll take it up again. With suggested improvements in the next meeting. Okay, next on the agenda, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero twenty-seven. An ordinance authorizing an interlocal agreement for road maintenance. For twenty twenty-four for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas and declaring an emergency. Who have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three oh twenty-seven?
I'll move that we approve twenty twenty-three oh twenty-seven.
Lynn made a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second, I'll read the ordinance. An ordinance authorizing an interlocal agreement for road maintenance for twenty twenty-four. For the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Holiday Island is responsible for the maintenance of roads for which the city has the right of way. And whereas the city of Holiday Island has chosen to contract for those services. And whereas the city or the Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District is willing and able to provide such maintenance services. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that the attached interlocal agreement. Between the city of Holiday Island and the Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District for twenty twenty-four is authorized. Since the period covered by this agreement begins on January first of twenty twenty-four, an emergency is declared to exist. And the ordinance will become effective upon passage, passed and approved. By the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas on this date of twelve nineteen twenty twenty-three. Just a general comment, this is exactly the same agreement we had last year. Uh, with the exception that the amount was adjusted for, to, to match the. I said road department budget for the agreement, we're paying our five point nine percent. So, any discussion? The, uh, suburban improvement district, uh, passed it for. Yesterday, yeah, so. Well, we haven't passed it yet, so. Right, there's no discussion, we'll move to the roll call vote.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
All in favor, Mister Mayor?
Okay.
I move that we approve the emerg- emergency clause.
I'll second that.
Alright, any discussion on the emergency clause? Roll call vote on that.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
All in favor, Mister Mayor?
The, the emergency clause passes and I'll get copies, uh, with signatures from us in the district. And blessed. Alright, moving on. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero twenty-eight, an ordinance authorizing an interlocal agreement. With the Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District to provide fire protection services for twenty twenty-four to the city of Holiday Island. The city, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency.
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero twenty-eight.
Ken made a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Then to second it. Um, can we? Uh, change the motion to approve this by reading it by title only? So move.
I'll second.
Okay.
That was Ken.
Yes.
Okay. Right, an ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero twenty-eight.
Need to vote on that first.
Okay, yes, we need to vote on that.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
All in favor, Mister Mayor?
Okay, I'll read the title. An ordinance authorizing an interlocal agreement with the Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District. To provide fire protection services for twenty twenty-four to the city of Holiday Island. Arkansas and declaring an emergency. And, uh, under, uh, I can make some brief comments on this. The only thing different between this and last year's. Is the amount which we put in here at forty-eight thou- at fifty thousand dollars. And basically that, um, the request was for forty-eight thousand to cover the radio upgrade. Uh, I rounded it up to fifty because nothing ever comes in at exactly what the, uh, what the estimate was. And, um. And we noted in the agreement that it would be payable upon notification that the radio upgrade had been completed. So, any discussion on that? Move to first our roll call vote.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
All in favor, Mister Mayor?
Okay.
A motion to approve the emergency clause.
Second.
Alright, uh, Pat made a motion to approve the emergency clause, Lynn seconded it. Any discussion? Roll call vote on that.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
All in favor.
Okay, then, uh. Well, the ordinance is approved and the emergency clause is approved and we'll get signatures, uh, again, the, the district approved. This, uh, from their end in yesterday's meeting. The last thing on the agenda is redundant, because we've already talked about the, uh. The revolution on the, uh, refund policy, so we can just scratch that. Moving on to public comments. Any public comments?
But you wanted three minutes.
Alright, council member comments? Oh, you have a comment?
What's the plan for dog catcher and all that?
The, uh, we do have money budgeted for next year for working with, um. With Good Shepherd. Um, but there's no plan yet, uh. We had, again, we had a pair that way back. They were willing to just handle it for us. They would provide. The patrolling and everything else, they would come up here, come out here and pick up animals. They would set up a, uh. A tagging and, and chipping program for pets and, and, uh.
Where would they take them?
They'll take them to Good Shepherd in Eureka Springs.
And Shepherd, you, you won't even take any animals anymore.
Well, in our origin, in our orig- in their original proposal. They were gonna reserve so much kennel space for us.
Okay.
But, um, that, we just couldn't afford it. And, uh. So, um, so that got paired way back to where hopefully we can come up with a, a paired back. Uh, plan where they would. Um, they would at least take the animals off our hands and. And, um, then we would, uh, roll in, roll the actual. Going out there and picking up the dogs and stuff, that would fall under code enforcement. And, uh, that's one of the reasons why I put in the budget a vehicle for code enforcement, so that we'd have. Someplace to transport animals and stuff like that.
Is there any organs, uh, people happen to have electricity? You know, we have one where you have to have trash service. How about electricity? Because there's people out there that don't have it, that just sit there running a generator twenty-four hours a day. That affects neighbors. And I just know one all the time, so.
I don't know why they would do that, but then that's gonna be expensive.
Well, as long as it don't fail to me, I can, I can hear that thing.
I think there's a I C I D regulation about that.
I know the person doesn't have electricity.
But.
I know they don't have electricity. We're just running that generator and it's, it's very noisy. So I'm just wondering if there's an ordinance on that, lots of people love.
I thought we had a nose.
We would, I, I think we could back into it. I think we could back into it. And, and I'm gonna have a, a meeting here very shortly on, on, um. How we're going to go about dealing with, um, what I would call. Um. Not really transient people, I can't think of the word, but.
News and neighbors?
Uh, well, people that, you know, they're. At the, as an example.
Yeah.
There's a property in Holiday Island here. That, um, it's a duplex. And, um, the, uh, there's a new owner. The new owner evicted. The red, the, the, the tenant. But they haven't taken action with the police for whatever reason yet to get the people out. Uh, water shut off, hours shut off. But the truck is there every day and the dog is there every day, so we know the guy is still there. And, um, so we're gonna have to work with, uh. With the, uh, sheriff's department and the land, the property owner. And come up with, you know, in some cases, it's gonna require condemnation. Because the property should not be, it's not habitable if it doesn't have sewer and water.
But it's owned by somebody else.
What?
But that duplex is owned by somebody.
Yeah.
So that somebody would have to take it to court and get a court order to have it evicted. Whereas I'm just talking about. You know, people running.
Yeah, but it, but it's the same, the, the, it would kind of be the same. We would, we would, we would go to the property. We would say, um, we're declaring this property uninhabitable.
Yeah.
Because there's no sewer and water and there's no electricity.
Yeah.
And you have X number of days to vacate.
Or get sewer water.
Or get sewer water and electricity.
Yeah.
That's how we're going to have to approach it.
Yep, that sounds good, sound fair.
But some of the properties, it's gonna even go one step further to where really the property is unin- uninhabitable for a lot of reasons.
Yeah.
But there's still people living there.
Alright, I've used my three minutes.
Let me know what the address says. I mean, that, that's the only way we can deal with it, if, if somebody reports it. Could contact Aaron or get, get, get it to me and I'll get where, we'll get it on the list. Okay, any other comments? Then, uh. We can move on to scheduling.
Councilmember.
Councilmember comment. Hearing none? Scheduling.
For January sixteen.
Well, sixteen, what?
One six. One fifteen two four.
One sixteen.
Uh, Dan. Uh, aren't you going to the municipal?
No, I was going to attend my.
I'm going in first.
Good. List of answers to come back with. Alright, um, no special meetings, no workshops at this time. Under announcements, I do have one announcement, unfortunately, um. Dated today, uh, mayor, please accept my resignation effective June, January first of twenty twenty-four. As a ward two council member, this is from Jerry Pittman. I have some serious physical and medical issues that prevent me from adequately fulfilling those duties. Respectfully to Jerry Pittman, I talked to Jerry today and. And, uh, so. We will have to, I guess, first look at the law, but I think the law says that I can appoint. A, uh, replacement, but I'll.
Nominate, we approve.
I think, I think.
Okay. So. Put your recruiting hats on and go out and find us a Peggy. Peggy wants to be a council member. You're in the right ward.
It doesn't have to be someone from Ward, yeah.
Yes.
Well, I think it does unless you can't find somebody from that ward, and then they can be at large, I believe.
This is just a fellow.
Right. Any other discussion? Welcome to adjourn. Second?
Same as yours.
Same as yours. Did I get a second?
Second.
Ken seconded it. All in favor, may I? We're adjourned.